Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting a Peterstownship Council order for Monday, March 10, 2025. Mr. Lawler, please follow the roll.
Ms. Chantefell.
Here.
Dr. Baroschek.
Here.
Mr. Kurt.
Here.
Mr. Steigl.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Okay, our S will pledge.
The legislation is as follows. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any changes or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carries. Have no special reports. We move into audience comments. This is an opportunity for a member of the audience to address council on a non agenda item for up to five minutes. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address council? No. Okay, seeing none, we'll move into unfinished business. There is none. So I'll take us to new business. First item will be approval of the Woodbrier Estates Phase One final plan.
So the preliminary subdivision land development plan for Woodbrier Estates was approved by Peterstownship Council on April 8, 2024. And a final subdivision of land development plan for Woodbrier Estates Phase One was submitted to the township on November 21, 2024. Council must take action on this final plan by March 12th. So action needs to be taken tonight. The approved preliminary plan is for residential development comprised of 52 single family detached homes, which is to be developed in two phases. The first phase, which is under consideration tonight, consists of 49 of the 52 homes. The plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission at its meeting on February 13, 2025, and was approved with conditions. A number of those conditions have been met, and what is left are correction of some type of graphic mistakes on the plan, as well as approvals by third parties, including the Washington County Planning Commission, PennDOT. They need to get a highway occupancy permit, approval of the sewerage facility plan by Pennsylvania DEP, as well as a Chapter 105 general permit and a NBDES permit by the Washington County Conservation District. The homes that are intended to be built in the plan are shown in the pictures shown here. Mr. Schleicher is here if you have any questions about the plan.
Paul, when this was before us on the preliminary plan, there was some talk about traffic calming on that cul-de-sac at the end of Sienna Woods. Is that still part of the plan?
I am pleased to address that. John Schleicher with JMS Engineering. So the cul-de-sac at the end of the Lobbrier Drive, it was recorded as a temporary cul-de-sac to be extinguished upon the roadway being extended through, and we had shown a traffic calming and worked with staff on that. During the Planning Commission process for final phase one, the neighbor immediately adjoining the Woodbrier Estates development to the north, which is left on the page, on the lower end of the cul-de-sac, had concerns of dedicating permanent right-of-way for that. So his building setback was based on the presumption that the road is going to go straight through. So I believe he stated his house is only 20 some odd feet from the edge of the paving. So with that, in talking through with staff and with Planning Commission, we've made that a straight-through roadway.
Yeah. We were contacted by the homeowner, and he's asked that the township pursue eliminating the temporary cul-de-sac, so.
Because as I recall, he was the one that came in and asked for the traffic calming to begin.
You're correct.
Okay. So if he's happy, then we're not going to worry about it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Still not sure that I see how the first criteria for open space is met regarding access and location. So requiring accessibility from a public street, abutting the site on one side. I don't, short of putting a pole off or some kind of parking on that open space on the east side of Venetia Road, I don't see how there's access available from a public street. I would think of it as being accessible from a township street where you could park on the street. So I know this was brought up before. It just doesn't seem like it's been resolved.
Well, what you've got to remember is this falls under the Conservation Residential Zoning District, and what was permitted under that district were quarter acre lots. And when there was a concern expressed about that development being, this development being done under those regulations, the compromise that was sought by the township and agreed to by the developer was to increase the size of the lots. And so no lot in there is less than a third of an acre. The impact of that was to reduce the amount of open space on the side of the road where the homes are. The other thing I'll tell you is this is not the only property along Venetia Road where there is open space on the other side of the road.
So what's the plan for that open space, then? Is it just going to sit there?
Yeah, more or less passive open space, but it does contain a large stormwater management facility that does have an access road to it. It wouldn't be intended for, it's not a parking lot. But, and then just to further Mr. Lowor's discussion on the open space, with our original application, we had met the open space on the, actually, north is to the left of the page, so just for orientation. We had met the 25% open space requirement on the northern parcel, independent of the southern parcel. It's when, in working through, you know, some concerns with the township, that we increased the lot sizes and still exceed the open space requirement. I believe we have over 30% provided, but that does include the parcel on the right side of the page.
And the other thing to keep in mind, this final plan is in conformance with the preliminary plan, which council has approved, so.
And also, I believe the catalyst for all this was how many homes did we reduce it to?
There was 80, 83?
Yeah, in the 80s.
What is the lot on the bottom part there? It's like almost the size of three different lots.
That's exactly right. It is proposed for three lots in phase two. There's a small wetland area in that portion of the site that we have to go through permitting for. So that's, it's carved out for three lots. All the infrastructure is going in with phase one, so when we come back for those three lots, that'll just be a simple subdivision.
All right, I'll make a motion. The council approved the Woodbrier Estates Phase One final plan, subject to the outstanding conditions listed in the manager's report.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Five to two on that one.
Thank you.
Next slide will be a resolution amending the Peterstownship Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. I don't think there's much change in here, right? It's just a question of the price going up.
I was going to say that the most significant change is the change in the fee, and that is raising it to $1,900, which is well below the amount.
All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 03-01-25, amending the Peterstownship Transportation Capital Improvement Plan.
Motion, or, sorry, give me a second on that.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, sir.
I did want to point out one thing is, and in the plan, there are a number of projects that have been designated. I really do believe the next project up, we are holding money, significant sums of money from these fees, should be the Waterdam Galley Road project. I think that intersection certainly meets the warrants for a traffic signal. I think, given the apartment buildings that are going to be occupied shortly, I think this is where we ought to concentrate our efforts. One of the things that I was going to suggest is that we authorize going out to get proposals to design that intersection using the transportation impact fees to cover the cost of that initially, so. You have any thoughts about that?
Are we legally responsible to put a light in there?
You're not legally responsible, but.
Well, I was supposed to go in when the school, when the Primrose was built down there.
When Primrose.
And Pendot pulled it out from under us then, remember?
Yeah.
Because Pendot told us it was going to, the light had to go in, right?
There would tend to be a light, but the reason why that project ended up not going anywhere, that there were also turning lanes that were required that made that project be fairly expensive. You know, the whole idea behind doing the design would be to be able to have something in front of Pendot that would allow them to understand what the nature of the improvements are, to get them to permit it, and then hopefully to get them to fund the portion of the project that goes beyond that which we have traffic impact fees for. But if you go through that intersection, there's a lot of traffic through there now, and it really does warrant the traffic signal.
It's only going to get worse when those apartments open up, too.
And now there's what? They talking about opening them up?
April 1st, if they can meet all the conditions.
Okay, so we passed the amendment of the approval plans. We need to move into the next item, which will be the ordinance amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinances.
I'll move that we adopt the ordinance number 914, amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's seven to nothing.
Do we give Mr. Lowor an answer to his pondered question? I didn't think that he did.
I didn't think I got one. What I would like to do is to be able to put together an RFP so that we can do the design of that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be an award for, bid for custodial services. There are only two bids, and the first for environmental control is significantly lower. Does anybody want to make a motion to award that?
I'll make a motion that we award a contract for custodial services to Environmental Control Ohio Valley.
Second. Okay, motion second.
Are we awarding it based on the base bid or also the alternate?
We're awarding.
It's still well under, regardless of which way you go.
Right.
Okay, just asking.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, seven to nothing. That's to be a request by Columbia Gas to conduct overnight work along Route 19 beginning in May.
Well, the only thing I want to point out about this is that, you know, Pendot had informed us that their intention is to pave from Donaldson's Crossroads to the county line. This project starts at the county line and begins to come south. All of this work is going to be done in the fifth lane, that center lane. And I don't know what impact that's going to have on the paving project, but certainly this project needs to move ahead before that paving is done. Certainly seems to make sense to me that you'd want to do that work at night because to have construction occurring on Route 19 during the day.
Didn't we do it when they were doing that part further down where Home on Pizza was and all that? Remember, that was a few years ago.
They had the night work.
We let them do the night work, right?
Yes.
Was there a lot of complaints?
Not on 19, we didn't have complaints. When we had night work on East McMartin Road, we had all kinds of complaints. But I don't think this impacts neighborhoods that way.
Well, no, you have to look at the impact on traffic if they're going to be working during the day.
Do we need a motion on this or just a consensus?
You need a motion because.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to nothing. Next will be setting a date for liquor license transfer to 3868 Washington Road.
So this is, this is the piece of property that's next to the Med Express where, right now, there's a court case with regard to a variance that was denied. They want to get a liquor license in here for a wine bar, and to do that, they requires council to adopt a resolution, but it also requires that there be a public hearing prior to that. You know, I think we probably should notify the neighborhood, but I will tell you, I think there'll be a lot of interest in this, but your discretion with regard to denying the transfer of a liquor license is near none.
You're right. It's a formality.
Yes.
So right now, we just need to schedule the date, right?
Right.
What did you just say? I didn't catch that. We have no discretion to deny it?
Under the statute, you really don't. I think it's just to go through the process.
Yes.
Then why do they make us have a public hearing and get all the samples?
Because this is the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. I think if you had, if you had a transfer to somebody who was, had a problem bar or something like that, but, you know, a liquor license for a wine bar on Route 19.
Is it there now?
Well, no, it's that big a deal.
No, it's a hole in the ground right now.
That's just.
All right, I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing on the application for transfer of liquor license for April 14, 2025.
I don't know if we'll have enough people on that. That's Primbury. I know I'm out.
Yeah, is that April 14?
Me, too.
And I won't be here.
Well, the rest of all.
I have to recite myself anyway.
For the four of us all, because if it's a formality, it doesn't matter. Paul, seven of us are here anyway.
Yeah, so to make sure there's enough.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm going to.
That's a regular meeting.
Side.
All right, did we get a second? I don't think.
A second.
Okay. Motion second for April 14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're going to send the notifications out like this now.
We're going to send the notifications out, yeah.
Don't we post this property for that?
I don't think it's required to be posted, but we can.
Like Mr. Ross said, I'd make sure we have a court before you send the notification.
Okay. All right, next slide, and we're going to discuss the traffic, or not traffic, the recycling and trash.
So we have been recycling, automated recycling for over 10 years. The carts had a 10-year warranty on them. We're beginning to have lots of repairs to these carts. And so the intention was that they be replaced. We've contacted DEP because if you recollect, we bought these carts originally, 90% of the cost of them was covered by a grant from the state of Pennsylvania. We've been told that if we replace the carts with the same sized carts that we have right now, the township will not be eligible to receive any reimbursement for that, in which case it will cost about $500,000 to replace all the carts.
Who fixes the wheels right now? We don't get, do we get charged for that?
You don't get charged right now because when we pre did the contract, they made them write in something that gives us like 18 months of free repairs. But what DEP has told us is that if we went to a large cart and promoted additional recycling, that it may well be eligible for a grant, in which case it could be as much as 90%. So the difference between staying with the same size cart and going with a merchant cart is a savings of about $450,000. So the question is, I mean, and the reason I have the two carts here is the footprint isn't substantially different. It's slightly smaller for the recycling cart, but it is not substantial.
Well, so to save $450,000, it's a no-brainer.
That's what I see.
Some of the plan to be just to replace them all in one shot rather than.
And what do you do with the cart?
The 96 gallon ones?
Yeah.
They almost look like the ones we already have.
Yeah. Well, it is the one you already have. So you would get a recycling cart as big as, as the current garbage cart.
And this is fine until 10 years from, or when we have to replace the garbage cans because if the same standard applies, everyone's going to have a dumpster in their yard. It's going to have to keep getting bigger each time.
So it sounds like everybody's on board.
Okay.
Okay. Update on the comprehensive plan.
We, we have accepted proposals for the comprehensive plan, and I, we just wanted to make sure of a couple of things. One, we believe this to be the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. The one question I have for you, we went to the Chamber of Commerce to ask for a representative for the business community, and Mr. Gold has been the owner of Ace Hardware for quite some time. But Mr. Gold, while he owns a business in Peterstownship, is actually a resident of North Strabane.
That's fine.
I don't think, quite frankly, that's a problem, but the council is assigned.
He's a representative of the business community. If you had a business in the township, I think that's fine.
It's fine.
Okay. The other thing is that on April, no, what day? April, March? Yeah, next Monday. We're going to have the three firms in to do presentations. The committee, at least the core of the committee that are people that are on our public boards have been invited to that. Anybody on council who wants to come to that is certainly invited as well because it's coming back for you, the youth, for a decision, so.
It is St. Patrick's Day, but.
We're starting.
We'll make an interesting discussion.
We're starting, what, 6:30, right?
6:30.
All right. Now, I don't see any harm if you want to invite the other members of the.
Oh, no, that's, no, that's my point. I think if anybody from council wants to attend, that would be great.
Can the public attend and be quiet?
Yes.
The question is, could you attend as a big one? Just kidding.
Is there anything else we need to talk about on that?
Nope.
At this point? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills. The filing to be in order, I move they be approved as submitted.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, seven to nothing. Correspondence?
A couple of things. There's a letter from Pendot announcing that we are the recipients of an Arley grant. That grant was put together by Kyle and Mr. Mudry. And, you know, what, in essence, it does is reduce the township's share of that project in half, so half the cost of this replacement, which is hopefully to occur this year. The one thing about the Arley grant may be it might slow it down a little bit, but our intention was to replace this intersection. We have an estimated about $440,000 to replace.
Okay.
The other thing I want to point out to you, there's an email in your document from Gail Rogers. Gail's father was out for a walk and fell down across the street in the neighbor's driveway, and these are guys from the Public Works Department were driving by, and they noticed that he was down, stopped their truck, helped him up, got him back to his house, and bandaged the guy up from his scrapes and bruises. And the interesting thing, I think, is I would have never known this because, you know, they never thought it was anything worth making a thing about for once and for Gail, sending me an email expressing her appreciation for someone taking care of her older father, so.
Very good.
Anything else? This letter from, well, the EGT one, that's normal. Minutes, is there anything that anybody would like to discuss from the minutes?
Nope. Zoning hearing board, miscellaneous.
Yeah, okay. There are two cases coming up for the zoning hearing board. I think the township needs to be involved in both of them. The, the one involves a request for a variance to place a electronic billboard. This is right as you're getting to the ramp coming down onto Route 19. Their argument, the reason why they need a variance is there's a limitation of the number of billboards, electronic billboards that can be within a certain distance. They have to be separated by 750 feet. Their argument is that their property can't be used for anything but a billboard, and so therefore they should be granted the variance.
Should be denied.
Yeah.
Well, wait a second. Which, is it a different owner than the owner of the other billboard up there?
I think there's one across the street.
There's one across the street, there's one up, up the road. They're both, there's one off of Cagney Drive.
Right, but that's a different property owner.
Different property owner.
So they just want to put another one up? They don't want to replace that one and make it bigger?
But it's not the same property owner.
No, it's a different piece of property.
And there's nothing else on that, there's nothing else on that property?
Nope. Nope.
See, I don't know that I have a problem with that because a billboard's a primary use, right? It's not a.
Go back, can you go back to the picture? I mean, there has to be more on that lot, right?
No, it's, it's the only thing that would be on that lot. But you would have to have a variance to do it because you can't have.
Too close to the road.
No, you can't have, billboards have to be separated by 750 feet. I don't think you need any more billboards in that particular section of town because that's where they're all concentrated.
Yeah, well, my, from my perspective, billboard's a primary use, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, if there's no other use they can make of that property.
Well, that's the argument, but that's one I necessarily agree with.
Well, I guess that's the question. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how big the parcel is. Can they build something on it?
It's at least an acre.
Okay, well, then never mind. Okay.
What's off that property?
Nothing.
Nothing at all. It looks like there's a drop.
There's, there's what? Storage, self-storage is up behind it, right?
Yeah.
That's.
Oh, that ramps there.
Right, right.
Ramps come down, right?
For the primary storage?
Yeah. And the storage is on the other side of it.
We don't have an aerial of it, right?
Well, they do, they do have a primary, they already have the billboard. That's its primary use.
Well, no, the billboard's on the next parcel.
This is on a parcel that has no uses on it currently. They want this to be the primary use. It's prohibited because it's too close to other billboards.
Because I remember we.
How far away from the next closest?
Do you know that? How far is it on the closest billboard?
I'm going to say around 500 feet.
And it has to be what, 700?
750.
And now when the other one up on Cagney is so far up, you can't, I can't believe him, but actually rents that thing. I mean, you're like, look, I guess to see what's up on there. I mean, I know we had this discussion when they put the one up across from Mertens Dental when they, because it's the only thing on that piece of property.
Well, it has to be. It has to be the primary use.
Right. I don't, I mean, this is probably one of the least, in my opinion, it's one of the least defensive applications we've gotten because there's nothing else there. And I mean, given the fact that the other one's 550 feet away, I wouldn't oppose it, but that's just my opinion.
I'd oppose it.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want a motion.
So what's council's position so that we can let Mr. Smith know?
I don't think we should do it. I hate chucking up 19.
I agree. I'm for it.
Sounds like the majority of that is in favor of intervening.
The other, and I thought I had a picture of this, but I.
Thought you'd think.
Apparently don't.
That's what Terry does.
Behind this house on Inverness, off to the right, on Woods Lane, there is a home and a garage where, in which a business has been run out of. We have various times cited that individual because he has vehicles, equipment, bulk storage outside, and so his solution is to avoid that going forward is to apply for a use variance to allow a commercial operation on Woods Lane. The problem is, and again, I wish I would have had the picture of his property. This person here, if you go up on his driveway and look to the right, you look right into that yard, and so he's always had a problem with this, and, and we've attempted to help him on a number of occasions by citing the neighbor. But I don't think the solution is a use variance to allow commercial operations in a residential zone.
It's not the same parcel that we had water runoff issues with, is it?
I don't think so.
This is right across from where Marlboro comes down, right?
This is, this is like the first house in on Inverness off of East McMartin Road.
Yeah, there's two houses on Inverness, and there's that space, and then.
Yes, there's a wooded space, and then there's this.
I've seen videos of what goes on. I mean, it's unbelievable, the stuff they're bringing back that are dumping, and like, this is a residential area. There's no way this should be.
Permitted.
Move to. Moved to commercial.
We make it what it is now.
Yeah, no way.
That's weird.
Well, how long's that business been there?
You know, I don't know. I have to go back and check.
The question is, why haven't we cited, you know, why is he allowed to operate?
Oh, he's been cited multiple times.
And he just keeps operating?
Yeah, but, well, because the way it works is that, you know, we cite somebody, they abate it, and then suddenly, or they get fined, and then suddenly it disappears for a while, and then it comes back. I mean, that's the nature of...
What type of business is it?
Landscaping.
Landscaping. Wasn't it the owner was renting that garage out to a company?
Yes, the owner of the property that owns the single-family home also rents this garage to a private business.
Right.
Is that why we took the court to rethings it?
I don't know.
So is it the owner of the house that's, or is it somebody else then?
The owner's leasing it to a business.
And the business is the one that's asking for the, or is it the owner asking?
Well, the owner's asking for a variance since it's his property.
Right.
Are they allowed to lease that out to a business? Like, is that legal?
That's the question essentially.
But is it a separate parcel?
Same parcel.
All in one?
Same parcel.
And this is, this is the house on the corner of Woods Lane and East McMurray?
It's up... I think it's one back.
One back.
I'm opposed.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's...
In your docket, I just wanted to point out to you, there is an update that was done by Ms. Arrow with regard to the Aqua Park. This is a picture that was taken earlier this evening. As you can see, the building, the blockwork on the building is all done. They're going to be pouring the floors shortly and putting the trusses into place. So the project's moving along. They lost a couple of days because of weather, but they're going to be very near the anticipated completion date. The one thing I want to point out to you is they're probably coming a couple of change orders. One of them has to do with rock that was hit when they were doing excavation for, for the drainage pipes that are there. There's a unit price in the contract. We believe the unit price applies to that, although we're waiting for determination from the architect on that. The other thing is when that came out of the ground, it came out of the ground when the weather was cold and those foundations needed to be heated. And as of right now, we're being told that that's not included in the contract, and there could be a change order to cover the cost of heating that when it came out of the ground.
So when they excavated that before, they didn't find rock then? Like, this is...
No.
No.
No, we, up against where they found that rock, there's rock everywhere. They did not, so.
We didn't have any geotecton on that prior to...
We did. If you recall, this, the earthwork that created the giant flat area was done during phase one of Roland Hills Park. So most of that is fill. It's only rock on the perimeter. Like, the perimeter was cut and flopped into the middle, so the middle was all filled and the perimeter is, you know, you go down about six or eight feet, they hit rock on some of the deeper stormsores. And there was no update to the, we did a geotech report before that earthwork was done to kind of characterize what the cut was going to be and stuff, but there was no bulk earthwork on this project, just trenches and foundations. So there was no updated geotech report done.
From what we're understanding, and I don't know what this means, that this isn't going to be a substantial change order, but we haven't seen a number yet.
Which side of that building will the splash pad be on?
On the left-hand side. So like where, where that indent is on the left-hand side, those are all restrooms that face into the splash pad. On this side, on the right-hand side, where the trailers are and that's parking.
PT alert, do you have an update?
Kyle, you want to tell us about?
Sure. So at our last meeting, Mr. Lewis had asked what we were doing to get the word out about our emergency alert, reverse 911 system. And shortly thereafter, we did have letters go out to all residents in Peters Township. Those went out on, I think they were in the mail on Tuesday, the 25th of February. And you can see, starting there on the 26th, our numbers started to increase drastically in terms of signups. We were about 550 as of the 25th. As of today, we're up around 2,700. So the word has gotten out and people have started to sign up. For the general public that might be listening or watching tonight, I do want to stress that if you have any issues with signing up, to give our offices a call. Our administrative assistants and staff members are trained in helping you get signed up, whether you want emergency alerts, non-emergency community alerts, you know, whatever that may be, we can help you get signed up. So additional promotions of this, Mr. Lewis, you know, we had the volunteer fair this past weekend. We talked to residents that attended that about the, the application as well. Obviously, Community Day and other community events over the summer will be advertising that as well. So you can take a look at, that's what our map looks like today in terms of signups. It's across the township as a whole. And one of the things that we discussed about moving forward with this program, Paul, if you go to the next slide, you've got the ability to kind of create a certain location to send a notification to. So for example, when that tornado touched down last year and we wanted to reach out to the residents specifically affected, we've got the ability to kind of tailor those messages to individuals or residents affected. So we look forward to using the system. I will tell you that probably sometime over the summer, we will send out a test alert to everybody, like an all-call, just so that residents are kind of familiar with what that is and what to expect when they get one of those calls. But we're going to give it a little more time to collect more signups for that, so look forward to rolling that out.
Thank you, Kyle.
I just have a couple of other things. If you've had a chance to be in Peterswood Park, the Field Two is getting very near completion. The intention is to have that field available to Peters Township Baseball Association at the beginning of April. One of the areas that may be an issue, though, is this area right here down the first base line. What we're owed is that to be restored and planted with grass. What needs to happen is there needs to be sod placed in that area so that, in fact, it is safe for the kids to play. It's out of the playing area. If you extend the line, the first base line down, it isn't going to be impacted. But as they move ahead, particularly on Field One, just as they did in here, they're going to come in and place sod behind the artificial surface. I think at that time, we're going to try to get a price on what it would take to place sod in this area as well, so that in fact, we can use this in, in April. The other place where this is an issue, and we're going to have a discussion with them tomorrow, this was a, what, a sewer line?
Yes.
A storm sewer line that had to be extended out of the drainage system for the field. We want to talk to them about getting the contractor to assume the responsibility for placing sod in, in this area as well. But like I said, the intention is to have the field turned over to baseball at the beginning of April. They are moving ahead on, on Field One. The curb on which the artificial surface is attached is poured up till, on that arc up to second base. They have it all formed as of today. My guess is they'll pour that curb in the next day or two, in which case they can begin to do the work that's needed to be able to put the, the artificial surface in place. But there's still additional work on Field One, and we're shooting for a date at the end of April, beginning of May to be able to make that field available, so. One last, well, two things. The deer calling program is complete. The police department has harvested 250 deer, and those have all been taken to local processors, and that meat is being distributed. We got notification from Mr. Bresch, the hand, the attorney who's been handling the eminent domain case on Mannerway. We're now in a position, we think, to move ahead with Burke down there. Mark and I were talking about this today, and one of the things we'd like to be able to do with council's concurrence is to create a temporary connection between Mannerway's existing street and the street as it existed, Juniper Woods. Part of that is to create emergency access, but the other part of that is to help us with making determinations about how that will eventually be paved. We intend to include it in the paving contract that's going out, and that's going out this week?
Advertise Friday.
Advertise Friday as an alternate so that council can award that.
That's fine.
We have a break in the weather coming up. I think the road department needs to be encouraged to get out there and patch some potholes. Turkeyfoot is a disaster. I don't drive it, but I would assume I can get that validated from some of the people who live out that way.
Did we buy that machine and fix it?
Oh, we have equipment to do this.
Yeah, actually, I know that Public Works used that last week on Turkeyfoot, and repaid Turkeyfoot this summer, so. And I know that this isn't the most cost-effective way of patching them, but Route 19, I can't believe it, but PennDOT actually did come in and fill some potholes on it.
Yeah, but it's still a mess.
Oh, I know. But there's some serious ones out there, and I just can't recall where all of them are, but...
One thing I would encourage, you know, council and we ask our staff to do as well, is to let us know where these are so that, in fact, they can be scheduled and addressed. You know, if residents know or have a concern about a pothole in their neighborhood, the best way to get a repair is to use P K for me or call in to the building, and we create a list of those, so.
Thank you.
Any items that anybody would like to see on the next agenda?
Said a couple of things. There's a street light that's burnt out just about in Bevau, right across from the rec center there. And then I took my dog for a run at Peters Lake today. Two really large trees are down on the trail. I don't know if that's Public Works or that's...
It's Public Works.
Yeah.
You're taking over my report. I hadn't been out there since the last win.
Anything else for the next agenda? Okay.
Thank you for attending.